We are in.
Is it eight thirty?
Yep.
Okay, we'll call the order this June third meeting. Marshall County Commissioners will start off with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Morning, everyone. We want to welcome our visitors. We'll start off like normal with the Highway Department. Jason.
Morning.
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 Self out over here this morning because I really didn't think I had a permit, but I do. First thing was the milestone agreement.
This is for the Community Crossings.
Yeah. That was just the agreement letter they signed. We need to sign so have a contract with them.
I remember correctly, Jason, there were seventeen projects on that.
They're listed on the front. I
I didn't count.
Off the top of my head, I don't remember how many there was. I think there were one seventeen. Definitely not looking forward to that closeout.
Do I have a motion to approve the milestone contract for Community Crossing projects?
No move.
I'll second it. Motion made second to approve the contract with the Commissioners all three signing. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
With that, they possibly will start this week. I did talk with them and it might get started this week on that.
Is it a cutter bore? Is it a cutter bore? You said bore?
It's a bore.
Yeah, okay. We have one road bore. It's for Precision Utilities Comcast, Pretty Lake Trail east of Pretty Lakeview. It's a bore sixty-six foot to install a new cat V cable.
Some move to approve the request from Comcast Cable.
Second, motion made to approve the request from Comcast. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Bridge eleven dates, Bridge One Yule Trail. Final plans are being reviewed, working with NIPSCO for relocate, buying of right of ways. Bridge two thirty-two Randolph Street, final tracing submission. Six seven, ten nine, twenty twenty-four is the letting date. Anticipate a pre-con meeting in middle of December. Due to the timing, push the road closure back until after Labor Day weekend of twenty twenty-five. In doing this, it would avoid a lot of potential risk. If they stuck to the normal schedule, I mean, you'd almost have to hit everything perfectly and jeopardize something going wrong than the road being closed during Blueberry the following year. So by doing this, that gives a little bit of a leeway in there for that. So they actually are sending a request to the area engineer reviewed and approved. Two thirty-one, no updates. Eighty-eight, no updates. Mill Pond Dam improvements, no updates. We're waiting on the core drilling results to determine the next step. Those were completed, so we're just basically waiting for their review. Road work, highway completed hauling millions and prepping roads. RejuvTech has sprayed. That just gives a list of the roads that were sprayed. Planning to start sealing next week, then finish out the air paving. Don't want to get started too late on the ceiling due to getting materials. Contacted mowing contractors to start the second round. Hopefully, they plan to start later this week. Likewise, a spraying brush. Working on catching up on patching potholes, gravel roads, and prepping chipping sealed roads this week. Due to hauling materials to the RejuvTech roads and weather, roads are starting to puddle and gravels need graded. Double checking equipment, start sealing next week. Rain days, we'll haul materials to other RejuvTech roads and prep planned to treat later this summer or early fall. The NOFA, the call for projects on one oh eight, scoring has been completed. United Consulting was a top scoring consultant. Indot has approved the selection review and may proceed with contract negotiations once completed. The LPA consultant contract will be submitted, Indot reviewing for approval. The electric grant first quarterly has been submitted. Grant agreement has been approved, exceded contract has been received, and will submit quotes for trucks in the near future.
Anything more for Jason? I have one little thing. It's not so much for Jason, so correct me if I'm wrong. This is more so for the public. Jason and I attended a safety summit from Indot last week of a report. And just so the public's aware, there's going to be a new initiative this summer for safety in work zones. So don't know for sure what all that's going to look like, but they told us then they're starting a new initiative. So slow down and be careful, okay? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
Museum, Sandy, Mike. They have their quarterly update.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you.
Well, thank you.
I think we have some, oops, I guess I'm supposed to say my name first. I should know this by now. I'll wait till Mike comes back.
I'm back.
Okay. I'm Sandy Garrison. I'm Director of the Marshall County Museum, and with me is
Mike Miley, President of Marshall County Historical Society.
And I think we have some pictures to share with you this morning. So in your packets, you'll find the museum's newsletter plus documents from the March Historical Society Board meeting and flyers from some recent programs, two of which we're showing you here on the screen. The museum summer is already off to a busy start. We hosted Indiana Humanities and the Indiana Historical Society on Thursday for a planning session on the, we're going to have to all practice saying this, semi-quincentennial, which is America's 250th birthday. That's coming up in July of 2026. So we're going to be excited to celebrate along with our fellow Hoosiers. We were excited to hear some of the things that the state is working on, and we'll keep you posted on all of that. The flyers that I'm showing you are from
The screen shows on this one brown bag Friday, June 28th, but on the she-jan it out, it's Friday, June 14th.
I will, oh, that's because it's two different ones.
Oh.
Yeah, so I'm going to tell you, tell you about that.
You jumped ahead, Jim.
It's sneaky, but yes. So the good news is the brown bags have really been packing the house, but we're doing something a little bit different this year, and so this is what Jim is asking about. Some of the talks will be held both at the museum and on the road. So for instance, we're doing two new encore presentations this year. The Bremen story will be presented both at the museum but also in Bremen. And then same with the Culver story. So we're hoping that that's something, if it seems popular, that we will continue to do throughout the county. It helps us reinforce the idea that we're the county's museum and that we can come and be relevant in all the communities. But I hope your Friday schedule will allow you guys to come sometime and attend. The programs have always, always been quite fascinating. And also, at the end of June, we're hosting the Indiana Lincoln Highway Association.
Actually, it's the National Lincoln Highway Association.
Ah, okay. They're going to be in Elkhart for their state convention.
National convention.
And I don't know why I've got that like, I'm thinking it was just the Indiana.
Is hosting the convention.
Okay.
National Association, Lincoln Highway Association.
And we'll have ninety members visiting the museum on June 25th and 27th. The story I'd like to tell you is actually in honor of their visit. Before I start, though, I wanted to say, everyone here probably already knows this, but the highway story is really central to the story of Marshall County as a community. We're the only place in the whole country where five of the original historic highways cross, so it's an important part of our story. But a hundred years ago, and I think I have a new picture for you, that's pretty much what our roads look like. There were 2.5 million miles of road in the United States, but most of those roads were dirt. They were bumpy and dusty in dry weather and really practically impassable and wet. But you may have heard of a Hoosier called Carl Fisher. He saw that this situation was keeping the automobile and consequently end users from reaching their full potential. I've got some new pictures for you. His vision was to remedy, to remedy this was to construct a coast-to-coast rock highway. Henry Joy there on the right, president of Packard Motor Car, loved this idea and suggested naming the road after Abraham Lincoln. This was actually before the Lincoln Memorial had been built in Washington, so this was considered an alternate project to that. Fisher and Joy tirelessly promoted this idea, and in 1913, the roads organizers agreed to adopt the name and incorporated the Lincoln Highway Association. But in 1914, there really wasn't much of a highway to worry about. Fisher's funding had stalled, and a route could not be agreed on. At this point, Joy changed the association's mission. It would now educate the public about the need for paved roads using the Lincoln Highway as a national model. And under Joy's plan, the LHA would fund seedling miles built of concrete or brick. And as people saw the benefits, it was assumed they would press their own local officials to build such roads in their states. And I think we're on to the next picture. So that's actually some local construction of the Lincoln Highway here. But for the next ten years, largely due to arguments over routes, the United States went from this one named highway, the Lincoln, to a confusing collection of numerous named highways. Such roads were marked only by painting colored bands on telephone poles. So you can imagine when several routes, several roads shared the same route, the pole would literally be just covered with a collection of stripes. The time had come for a more organized highway system. In 1927, Congress approved a plan and laid the basics. Key east-west roads were numbered in multiples of ten, and major north-south roads now ended in a one or a five. The plan required the now familiar shields, and to avoid confusion, all non-regulation signs were taken down. I think I have a later picture for you of, this is the Lincoln one was actually done, and again, here locally in the county, a picture. So the Lincoln Highway ended its, or Lincoln Highway Association ended its existence, feeling it had met its goal of creating a modern road system. And while most named highways were soon forgotten, the Lincoln was not, since many cities often kept their Lincoln Way highway signs as street names. Still, awareness of the Lincoln Highway faded as generations grew up seeing only numbered roadways. The Lincoln Highway had become an endangered historic treasure, but the good news is that a new Lincoln Highway Association was formed in 1992. And then I thought you might appreciate this picture. Does anybody recognize the lady there?
Linda Ruby.
Picture of Linda from twenty-five years ago when they were here for a visit with the Lincoln Highway Association. So their national chapter will be visiting us on the 25th and 27th. I've had so many conversations with them, I can't believe I'm not like, you know, getting that right. We would love it if you guys, again, were free one of those days and could join us for lunch. It should be a lot of fun and really interesting to see everyone. And that does bring me to the end of today's report, and I thank you as always for your attention, and I'm happy to, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I have one more thing to add to it. This ten-million Model T will be coming through Plymouth on the Lincoln Highway. We think the sixth or seventh this week. They're driving the Lincoln Highway from New York to California again, so it's a Model T. It's a ten-million. That's a lot old, and they don't know, it could be in Ohio or Pennsylvania on the sixth or seventh, who knows? But, but they're making that trip again. The gentleman that's doing it made this trip with his father in 1974, actually, also. So that Model T's been across the country a few times.
Yeah, so it should, should be really cool to see them. We're excited.
Anything else?
Nice job again, as always.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate your support.
Yes.
Before you leave, we have a donation. Stan, you dropped that off. It's from Architectural Drawings Courthouse Restoration Trim Pieces. This is a deed of gift for you to sign if you want approval of that.
We need approval to accept it.
If you want it, yes, then that you can sign it.
Yeah, then I can sign it. It's for architectural drawings and stuff donated to the museum.
I know I did that three years ago, I think.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, because we gave you some, we gave you some pieces off the outside of it.
This is the drawings, I think.
Oh.
This is different.
Yeah, this is a set of architectural drawings.
Spray, we have those.
Right, okay. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the gift to the museum of the architectural drawings of the courthouse.
Is there one signature or three?
One.
With the president signing.
Second, motion made second to approve, accept the agreement, the gift for the Marshall County Museum. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much. My understanding is this is an extra set. You have, you have a set also, but this is an extra one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sheriff. Is it MOU for Lake Max?
Push this in for you. You're going to sit on that.
Good morning.
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 Yeah, we need to update the memorandum of understanding with Lake Max and Cucky Association. And the only change to this memorandum from the earlier one are the dates to reflect my term of office.
Okay.
So it terminates at the end of my term.
Get a chance to look at this, Jim?
No, but what, what's your term in? This says December 31, 2026. It shouldn't really be twenty
It terminates on December 31, 2026, which would be the end of my term.
Okay, well, that, I'm looking at that, and that's what this says. You need paragraph one under, during the term, the party do the following.
Do you need, do you need time to review this later?
I guess, yeah.
What if we approve it pending his, Jim's review? Are you okay with that, Sheriff?
Do what?
We approve this pending his, Jim's review? He hasn't had a chance to review it yet.
Oh, okay.
And I don't think there's any change.
Well, I can say it's the same one you passed four years ago, except for the dates are reflected in from my, this term for me, starting January 1, 2023, and then it's going to terminate on December 31, 2026, unless both parties mutually agree to modify it.
You come forward with that, Jim?
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll make a motion that we approve the MOU between Sheriff's Department and the Lake Max and Cucky.
Motion, excuse me, second, motion made second to approve the MOU between the Sheriff's Department and Lake Max. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sandy.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Sandy Dunphy, Administrator of the Health Department. I'm here to ask permission about applying for, it's not really, okay. So I think Tori and Angie, no more than a lot of folks down at our state do, just for the record. Because this 317 bridge program, which sounds like it's something for the Highway Department, when it was presented to us, it was, they kept saying, this is just a reimbursement. It's not a grant. So I, you know, we said, okay, great, we'll do the reimbursement. We'll sign up for this program because it gives vaccines to adults that are uninsured or their insurance does not cover a vaccine. That way, there's no cost, because we didn't want cost to be prohibitive. So we signed up for this, thinking they, the state would reimburse us for the administration. And then, when the check showed up, 317 Bridge Access, these ladies at least were smart enough to realize it didn't go into the Highway Department fund because a lot of health department, or a lot of county governments, that's where they put the money. Because it does sound like something for the Highway Department. Anyway, so that's what I need your permission to accept these funds and then create a fund for the reimbursement dollars. And then the other one is the preparedness grant. It's just a letter stating that we're going to receive the funding, but no contract has been sent yet. We don't really have the outline yet of what it's going to, like, what our, what we need to do to execute the grant. But in the past, it's always been preparedness activities. Like we have to, our preparedness coordinator has to work with other county, like EMA or FIRE, just to figure out an emergency plan for Marshall County. And that, when I say the contract hasn't come through yet, I'm just here to let you know they already said we're going to receive it, but just giving you a heads up.
We need to wait. Do you receive it or do we need?
I don't know. I just wanted to make sure everybody was on the same page in case the money shows up before the contract, because it seems like that's been happening lately.
What's your opinion, Angie?
If you wanted to agree to allow her to do that, I think it would be best if we had a motion.
Okay.
That way
I'd make a motion that we approve the receipt, the funding for the Bridge nineteen for the Health Department and also the request to apply for the PHEP grant.
Second, motion made second to approve receipt of the funding for the nineteen bridge provider agreement and also for the PHEP grant.
Yeah, I put Health Department in there.
For the Health Department, I'm sorry. Yes, correct. I want to go on the highway, right?
Yeah.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
And I did want to give you an update that the Sopan Medical Foundation, the Blood Mobile, they are so happy about the partnership and the numbers that they're having turnout for their blood drive. And we are going to continue it, you know, weather permitting, until the snow flies, as long as they can get down here. They'll be coming back approximately every six weeks, so you can, if the same folks want to keep donating, they'll be able to. But they're, they're really happy with the turnout, so I do.
Okay, thank you much.
All right.
Attorney report, Jim?
Pretty short attorney report today. The company, we hired to inspect the jail structure, schedule an inspection date, and I
June 4th, I think.
Tomorrow. Tomorrow, so hopefully, a report will follow soon thereafter. The appointment of the alternate member of the county BZA, I drafted that resolution, and I had a question. That's where I am at this point, rather than send it to you. You decided that you wanted to appoint Michelle, so that wasn't a problem. The question is, did you want me to appoint, or did you want to appoint her till she leaves the Plan Commission? Or did you want to make the appointment on a calendar year basis so that the Commissioners could each calendar year look at and either reappoint or appoint somebody new?
I would suggest that we make it till the end of this year.
Calendar year.
Yeah, and then at the beginning of the year, when the Commissioners make appointments, they can decide whether they want to do that or not.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make that option, and we'll get you the draft of that and have it ready for next meeting. Tourism Board, the newly appointed Tourism Board met on Thursday, May 23rd, at the Blueberry Festival Office. Officers were elected. Some business was briefly conducted. Their next meeting is this evening, and thanks to the Commissioners and to Angie for agreeing that they can use this room. You know, at some point, those meetings are going to have to be live streamed, so it's probably a, maybe a permanent kind of meeting place for those folks, since the, we have that option, or they have that availability now and not otherwise. And thanks, Angie, for meeting with them tonight. I, they, I think you can provide some very helpful information to them. The transition is, from the previous Tourism Commission to the new commission is not proceeding as smoothly as I'd hoped, so I'm hopeful we can get that turned around. The MOU with that Marshall County Hope, I thought Marshall County Hope was sort of reorganizing so we could just write a check to them. Has that been straightened away, or do we know?
Uh, no, I talked to Thomas Kennard Friday. He had reached out to see where we were at with that whole process. I explained to him we were waiting on Marshall County Hope.
I mean, if they change it, I think the MOU we drafted, it would work, but
Yes, and I've reached out to State Board of Accounts just to get some confirmation from their end as well, so I'm waiting on that.
Okay. And then finally, under new business, that contract statute that state adopted does not go into effect till July 1, so the ordinance I drafted concerning the, the provisions that are to be in ordinance, or to be in contracts for the county, I'll circulate that, but look to have you approve that after July. So that's all I have. Thanks.
You got anything for Jim? You got anything, Jim? Okay, thank you, Jim. Next, we come to the audit report.
I have your May 20 minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the May 20 Commissioners' meeting.
Second, motion made second to approve the minutes, May 20 minutes of the Commissioner meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
I have your May 28th executive session minutes.
You were there by phone.
I was there by phone. Is that okay? I wasn't there in person.
Yeah, you couldn't be there. Were there three people there or?
Yes, Mike was there.
I think if, did you look at them? I mean, are they?
Yeah, yeah, they seemed to be.
Yeah, I'd say.
I mean, I heard everything.
Yeah, you heard everything. He was there the whole time on phone.
Yeah. All right, I'll make a motion that we approve the executive minutes from the May 28th Commissioner Executive Session.
Second, motion made second to approve the executive session minutes of May 28th. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the accounts payables.
Second, motion made second to approve the accounts payable claims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Make a motion to approve the payroll claims.
Second, motion made second to approve the payroll claims. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Now we come to public comments, but I'm going to deviate just a second. Breezy, you want to come on up and bring your guests? We have some guests with us today that I want to give a chance to acknowledge, and maybe they have a comment. And please all state your name and address, or not, not your address, titles, please.
You guys can go ahead and sit down. So I'm Brianna Soniker. I'm the Ag and Natural Resources Extension Educator up in the Extension Office. And with me, I have Jane Deaton. She is our new 4-H educator, and her first day is actually today, so she's an hour on the job so far.
Not quite an hour.
Not quite an hour on the job.
So, and then I'm Robbie Kelly, and I currently serve as the interim County Director, and I've been here since April, March, something like that.
Thank you. Anything you want to say?
I am just thrilled to be here. Originally a Marshall County girl, have been gone for almost ten years, and thrilled to be back in the county, working with the 4-H program and through Purdue, and anxious to get started.
We're glad to have someone back up in that office.
Hopefully, this can be a long-lasting relationship.
Hopefully, it'll be a long-lasting relationship, yeah, especially for the kids here in the county for 4-H, so.
Anything you want to add?
No, we're just excited to have Jane on board and, you know, the office back fully staffed and get them back to a new, fresh page, so.
Thanks for your help, Robbie.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Anything you want to say, Breezy?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
And I'm sure our reporters here will want to have, maybe have a talk with you, so.
Okay, I'll be here.
Welcome to the county. Thank you very much. Are you going to be here all day today?
Yes.
Okay.
I left Arizona on Wednesday, and I'm here full-time starting today, so.
Good for us. Thank you very much. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to the Commissioner items. Unsafe Building Appointment. And I understand we have a resignation, right, Angie?
Yes, Kathy Schwenk has resigned her position. She has taken a new position and can no longer attend the meetings. So you'll have to have a replacement person on that. I have not had any recommendations made to me from Plan Commission or any, or I'm sorry, Building Inspector or anybody else on that. So I don't know if this is something that you want to wait until the next meeting, or if you have anybody.
I don't have anybody at this point in time. I mean, I gotta be honest with you, I've never seen her at a meeting, the ones I've attended, so I didn't know. I didn't know we had this issue.
She took Michelle Livinghouse's place when Michelle stepped down, because Michelle was Because Michelle was an adult, worked for the Adult Protection Agency.
Yes, and it has to be a social advocate.
And it has to be a so, social advocate, so...
You got anybody in mind?
No, I don't.
This table it till the next meeting and we'll try to come up some names and maybe get... Who do we need to check, let's do... We'll just have to do some checking. I don't know who to go to right now. See if we find somebody meets that criteria. You got anything in mind?
Sandy, leave?
Well, we can talk about that and try to figure something out, bring some names back.
Yeah, the, these, the Welfare Department, Health Department, you might check with their directors.
Okay. I guess my question, would Casa be fit into that?
They would be a social advocate, but they're mostly juveniles.
That's a child, that.
I think you're looking more for an adult situation.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll have to do some checking on that and bring them back next meeting. Okay, next we have the security cameras. And you, there's been some discussion on this before, we had a proposal six months ago. We got an updated proposal. You got a copy of that, Angie?
Yeah, I do. I'm sorry, we don't have it up on the screens.
Oh, you don't have it on the screen?
I apologize.
I've got one here. Did you want, did you see it, the updated one? And that was just, we just got that last week and basically it's 53,000, what was it?
751.21.
53,751.21. The original proposal was 42.5, but in six months, they've added five or seven cameras over to the courthouse to get better coverage while we're doing it. And there was a cost increase in the cameras in the last six months. So the idea being, we had a quote before, it was like 80 or 90 thousand dollars from a different company. But they had to buy licensing agreements and everything else. And with this, with Hyperwave, this is through Hyperwave, we don't have to buy any of that. So I guess my question is, I would like to take it to the council, see if they would fund it. Sheriff does not have that in his budget. Sheriff will still maintain control of the cameras, we're just helping get it going and get it funded. So definitely will change, structure-wise.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we support the replacement of the cameras in the amount of 53,751.21 with President of the Commissioners going to the County Council, asking for their support.
I'll second that motion. Motion made second to approve taking this to the County Council in this, this bid in the amount of 53,751.21 to update the cameras and that will be on both buildings, this building and courthouse. Also, it will help security-wise because we'll have better coverage, number one. And number two, when we get, days were short, they'll be able to carry a little pad and monitor everything that's going on in both buildings, my understanding, so. And I think somebody from Hyperwave is going to come to the council and explain it all too, so. But with that, motion made second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. And that brings up the second situations and brought up with all this requirement, it's now for live streaming everything. Do you mind if we ask the council to consider setting up a second room here in this building? Maybe a small, one of the smaller rooms, whether it's up, over here at EMA and HR. We only got two rooms available we could set this up in, or the TRC room. But I think there's going to be so many meetings, I've talked to Angie about this, there's going to be so many meetings going on and some of them are smaller meetings that could be done in a smaller room if we have the same time. So while we're doing all this, might be the time to look at it. What do you think? Are you opposed to it?
No, I didn't know anything about this.
Well, it's just kind of come up.
Are you...
Are you talking about replicating this in another room?
In a smaller room, yes.
The Township Trustees, they have to start live streaming as well next year, right?
I'm understanding, yes.
I mean, they hold their meetings, I think, in their homes, don't they?
Yeah, any entity that deals with tax dollars is going to be required to livestream starting July 1st of 2025.
So I mean, you're going to have, it seems like it would make sense to have a room available rather than have all those people try to set up live streaming in their homes and every place else. But the other side of that is, is if you're going to provide that, you might want to think about...
Charging.
Yeah.
Well, we're going to have to, because you're going to have security, you've got somebody's open and closed building. And you can't put that on the staff now to come in here every time somebody has a livestream. So we would have to pay for something, but that's just, that's something we'd work out later. I mean, but I think it's something, it's a year from now and I know how time gets away from us in government. So it's just something we need to be on, be aware of. And maybe we'll just leave it at that and everybody be aware and think about it and decide, move forward. At least, at least it's out there.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
With that...
I'll make a motion to adjourn if you don't have anything else.
I don't have anything else. Second, motion made second adjourn, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries.